............................................................................................................................................................
I have the third meeting last Tuesday here for the White House amendments. Uh, we have actually two organs in three for salmon organs. Yeah, we have to keep up with this since our organs have been replaced because there's certain conditions in there that they're being treated. That's the last three or four months. And also, we have two thousand and twenty-two dollars in our organs, which is two thousand dollars a month. Three thousand dollars a month. I believe we don't start to spread those other three uh budgets. Right? But I can see that we're going to have to, I believe, at least ten percent of the budget. So, it's a second.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Anything else?
That's all, Mr. President. Uh, a couple of words from some speakers. Um, um, uh, just a quick update on the following page. I just got the call for this story. Um, we're going to be, of course, the town for our third round. If you're the swing to ever go for anything, uh, but it feels we'll always do every year. We're helping the lead to evolve, so, uh, we'll be out into a fourth program. Uh, starting next week. Hi, President. I'm going to remind you to take in most embarrassing things, tell me through the leaders on, uh, Bruce has talked about this, um, in Appalachia. It's an absolute disaster. And I know Bruce told me this, Turkey Creek is on one eighty-five job. I would hope that over the winter, how much you and Bruce and the rest of us, he gets together with the water company, Bruce said, there's going to be more repairs. Just working the extra weeks in the evening. It's, it's just been a nightmare. And Bruce, you can hear it, I know you do. Uh, if we could work with these Indiana, the one with three of these hot drivers, uh, that is ripped up in the restoration system, something they break, we've been going through some shit and got on this house with this water company. They're coming, their restoration's lacking, high people, calm, it's raining. Well, there was some unfortunately, there was that leak due to job because they're utility. But we didn't call. They have called water company, they've called the seven of us. But, uh, I think we definitely need to settle a lot here, because there is something we can't control, preserve, conserve, and restore. Uh, you know, when we're doing that small work last week, so, this may be a damn is a weekly, you know, like we yard them for the necessity of having to go for it. Like we still had a little bit of work on, uh, Madison, so we're getting to also, so, try to be willing to, uh, set some type of pipeline that, you know, not the rabbits and the bees. You know, maybe there's a few of those, because we did it. This doesn't involve more than such. Big allow, we can get tomorrow late, like, but I have my time, right, for, for outside, you know. The place that does no better for us. Uh, the television has to be started, and you have to, uh, do, uh, that, and do that. So, uh, why don't you go? I think the meat and drum and the risk, the death force, or whatever, but it's sustained utility. You know, with all due respect, we have had this problem with variable conservancy, it depends on conservancy. And so, we should not just go with the complex guys, or say, we don't have that problem sustaining utilities. And we continue to have problems in that. And I'd like to remind you, Indiana water, if we voted, and given that how many water lasts, we did a lot, for how many millions of dollars, if we fed on water lines, bring water to residents where they pick up the customers. And we don't get any of that money. They get all that money usually, that we just really cooperate, will defend with us, and it's just something saying over and over again. So, there are no thoughts for that. But, uh, you know, uh, I mean, I gotta say, so, we share, uh, if you like what I think, uh, that was your, uh, 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 you know, I think that was what it was. That was your, was for, uh, uh, here, for a lot of years here, going to do it all, uh, in Arizona, Madison. Yeah, and we were trying, between myself and, of course, Steve, and perhaps, and all the projects, from back then, kind of sort of, oh, trying to take off the train power. You can't do this, because you gotta get done, you can't bring this open, like, open, and, uh, yeah, if it was a last all summer long, but not give, everything they come back. If I told, 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 I mean, if they end up putting two days, you know, so, we're, it's over there.
...corporation for mixed, wrong service to the citizens of Maryland. And this is a breakthrough in an important service to the council in the market. Remember, once it arrives at the town will pay any trial for that share for the board's stock that would be plus units themselves, they will pick the dust years up, the actual best years there is with the rest. In the summer of twenty seventeen, in the agreement of three year duration, our operating management, it was listed in the top fifty two, like a twenty-five percent on Maryland local share for the three years. After the completion of three years of service, the town would have the right to negotiate with your public president as to whether they wanted to continue the service or not to continue the service. At any time during the term of the agreement, the town has a right to negotiate with your public president to modify the specific location of the run. And his understanding from the workshop that the council told him to do, proceed with your PCC with respect to a lack of any block or home is like correct? It's possible, you know. Alright, that's a part of the agreement. It is the first service helps citizens get more, it helps citizens get medical care, it helps citizens get to places of education, and it helps families.
You have something that is so weird for us, it's all that's on it. But I, my, what's going to take one, what's going to take the services, because we're going to be the ones that we want to have. Uh, now, so now, we'll see if we can, uh, how to really, uh, we will be careful, uh, we will want, or we want to sort of, uh, so, so, uh, I don't think that's a problem. So, what is on the side, you know, some, and every president of Maryland, very different. What we do, that we then worry, we will find any, or, or, maybe, they will be saying, hey, yeah.
Of course, when we decided at the workshop where we think about, uh, uh, it's just like we hear a lot of them. The government most of the week, uh, the D C, uh, very, very, uh, the D C is not Maryland.
Yeah, we're in the council, I did say my council, uh, three, uh, I understand that the great top, uh, very, very, thanks for the work you did, this is your question. I'm very, uh, I'm sorry, locals, we should get a, uh, uh, hit the hills and cross affairs. There were no followers, I mean, much bigger than the council, we were, we were, uh, 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 uh. Very, uh, I've been actually, uh, there was, uh, quite a lot of this, uh, to these, uh, these, uh, uh, this, uh, to, uh, most of, uh, times, we have, uh, something here. Some, I think that, that's what it does, and you very vision, okay? Basically, without payroll, the very chair first, twenty seventeen, that's within my health, uh, to include, including taxes, the current tax, the medical plan is paying exactly the law. Handout for overall increase plus two point three percent. That was supposed to increase okay, the current tax operators plus twenty-nine point eight percent. Operating on plan to employees and, uh, agents, uh, wants to, highlight one, uh, the cost of the account. Still, uh, with November twenty-sixth, our loss is deductible in there, it's two hundred dollars, one hundred percent here that were charged. Seven percent out of their culture, certainly good practice, but full, then four years of tax, three, sixty, twenty-nine, five, we are on that's over two point three. And twenty-five percent, five hundred, that's on the tier four. Move to change the government, that plan, no plan changes, ten, right, it'd be, uh, for that, second go, see, we want to be settled now, we need, uh, see the top there, it's about one thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars. Move to, uh, which, uh, which, uh, which, uh, changed it, uh, five percent, which did, uh, uh, increase. Employed by hospital, which is provided, we use all the money, probably eighteen eighty-six, employed by, uh, forty-six, six, four, it goes to, uh, four, six, six.